Okay, I guess we're gonna start. So. Ready? Welcome to the Bristol Planning Commission meeting for October 6th, 2020. Tonight, well, first, we're going to review the agenda for any addition, removals, or adjustments. And I added, I added one item under new business with basically, which I didn't have on our original agenda, was to basically have a discussion after the public hearing is closed on whether moving forward to approve or not approve the plan and move it on to a select board public hearing. So that's my addition. And I sent that out to the board today. So the next item is to review and approve minutes from 9:15, 2020. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there any discussion? Our second, please. Jeff seconds that. Bill, you're taking notes, right?
I am.
Thank you. Okay, so is there any discussion on the minutes for September 15th? Seeing none. All in favor of the minutes for 9:15, 2020? Say aye. We got all ayes. Okay, that passes. And I don't have any. I'm sorry, I just got a text from someone who's trying to get on. So I don't know. Hold on a second. Okay, so. Any administrative matters? Do you have anything first, Chris? I don't have anything. Okay. Any chance you could send a working link to Sally Burrell, Chris? Do you happen to have her email?
As I was checking right now.
Oh, okay. I just can't do that right now. So. It's on the agenda. Okay, so then the next item on the agenda is a public hearing on our town plan, which includes our new enhanced energy plan. The town plan has. We have been working with the Addison County Regional Planning Commission for a while. And then had an extension because of COVID and the more difficult format for having meetings and public meetings. But we have come to put together a draft that we're happy with. And this public hearing is to hear from the public, obviously, to see any questions, comments, anything that they would like to add or concerns. And we will listen to that and discuss that when the hearing is completed.
So I did not receive his email.
Excuse me?
I just sent. I do not.
I just sent her one.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Jeff got it. Thanks for looking, Chris. And so after we close the public hearing, we will have, as I said in the agenda, we'll have a discussion and and vote to approve the plan as is or with conditions depending on, you know, our feedback tonight and also feedback from our own commission. But we've, we've talked, we've talked as a commission and and made additions and changes in the plan. And Andrew Leroux is going to share the screen, his screen with the plan. I, there was a memo. Everyone on the board has it, but I guess I will read it to you. That basically, I'll just sort of highlight it. It basically talks about the major changes on the plan. It is what was in front porch form. So if anyone, if you're familiar with that, I don't need to do that. But I see Sarah has it. So then I'm sure Howard's read it. So but basically, the big difference is the enhanced energy plan. That's the big appendix that we've added. But we've also added a section on flood resilience and hazards related to flood resilience. And we have an update to our natural resources chapter that that focuses on forest blocks and forest fragmentation and wildlife corridors. We have reviewed the goals, policies, and tasks for each section and updated our implementation plan. And basically, other minor changes. We did a little reworking of the housing plan. And basically, updated, you know, it hadn't been updated in a while. Looked at transportation to update on what projects had been completed, what projects are in the, in the hopper. A lot is happening there. Made sure we had our facts right for all the municipal facilities and obviously, updated population and those sort of things. So there it is in front of you as I am talking about it. Okay, so. I guess we're just gonna open it up to questions and comments from the public. So. I'm gonna stop talking now. If anyone has anything.
I'll just ask, on the implementation plan, I was just, my name is Sarah Stott and I live in Cohousing. And I'm a planner by trade. So I was just really curious on what the town's doing. And I think the plan's great. The implementation plan just seems so overwhelming. It seems like the Planning Commission and a lot of other groups are gonna have an awful lot on their plate in the next like three years. So I was just curious, how are you gonna pull that all off? And is that, do you guys think that's realistic? Or just?
Well, I'm smiling because we cut, we made it a lot smaller than the last time. So. And. You know, I guess it is a start. I don't, you know, and it's, we tried to whittle it down. You don't know actually what will get done. And so I think. I mean, there are things to shoot for. I don't know, does anyone else wanna comment on that? Chris?
Yeah, the other big piece is if the zoning changes go through, the planning commissions require, or requirements will be lessened. They won't be having any public hearings. They will just be doing planning. So hopefully, they, the focus will be allowed towards implementing the town plan and modifying zoning rights going forward.
Right, and all of those are not, all of those are not tasks that the Planning Commission is responsible for.
That was clear, yeah.
So it's. And depending on the makeup of the board and depending on, you know, sort of the will of the board. And, you know, the idea is to follow that. But something might get, you know, and who knows what the heck's gonna happen, you know? So it may be all very different. But I think we felt pretty good about sort of trying to consolidate it a bit. And at least that's how I felt. I don't know if other people felt the same. But. Anything else?
Do you wanna summarize the enhanced energy plan just a little bit? Would that be fair to?
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Would you like to summarize the enhanced energy plan? I'm just to?
Yes, I'm gonna ask one of the experts on that. And I, you know, Rob, I hate to, hate to call you out, but you were on that special committee. So Rob. Rob Rooker is on our planning commission and he worked with Andrew and he worked with Mark. And I can't remember who else now. For our planning commission, it was just you two. And then people from the Energy Committee.
Some others from the Energy Committee as well. So, yeah, it was, started two years ago, working on that, actually, with Andrew. So it's lengthy compared to the rest of the plan just because of the amount that needed to be covered in it in order to meet state requirements for that, which gives us some extra bargaining in, make sure it local, say. And that was kind of the big driving factor in us implementing that and adopting that. It really just kind of sets forth some goals to, in order to meet the state statutes of their energy goals. 90 by 50 is that what, always screwing up?
No, I put you on the spot, Rob. I'm sorry. That's been done for a while.
Yeah, it has been done.
If it's helpful, I can put it on shared screen.
Yeah, I could probably, I have actually been working on a couple of plans lately on the regional level. So are you familiar generally how they're formatted, the energy plans?
I remember seeing it through the, the different sections that were in it.
Right, right. So it's pretty much kind of a formula set forth by the state that looks at the different energy sectors of electric, thermal, and transportation. And, and so when this project, I think it was like in 2016, is that right, Andrew? That, that the state, which act is it, I don't remember, but sort of set these targets for 2050 to, to encourage communities to generate renewable energy of certain, to certain targets. And so this plan, basically, if you decide to write a plan and it's voluntary and Bristol chose to do that, look at the different energy sectors. How are you going to do a combination of conserving energy, weatherization, and that, and then generating renewable energy in these different sectors to meet certain targets? And then, you know, then a little more specifically, how you would do that. And then also, this, and a lot of the numbers came from Efficiency Vermont. And Andrew, what is the name of that? The, I always forget. It's a company up in Burlington, I always forget the name of it. But someone will tell me in a minute, I think. Anyways, they generated the numbers and the targets. And so each town also had a series of maps that were generated and specific targets, though, and each town actually had their own specific targets that were developed based on the land area of the town, population of the town. And so it wasn't just based on population, it was a combination of things. So as part of the process, towns would identify where things might happen. So basically, it was asking the town to put together, you know, a real conceptual idea of how they maybe could reach these targets in these different energy sectors. And so if you did that, then you're, and it was approved. And so if this goes forward and it's approved as part of the town plan, and then it would have to get regionally approved. And if that happens, then Bristol would have more say in a local decisions on energy. Because as part of the plan, also, there's whole citing criteria. So it's basically asking people to take a look at it, towns take a look at it, develop a plan, and then you know, then you get the carrot of saying, saying what you'd like for your town.
Right.
I don't know. How'd I do, Rob?
I think you covered the, the general gist of it.
Okay.
Definitely a lot of statutory stuff involved with that and requirements needed to meet for that.
Did we lose Andrew?
We have a question right here.
Okay, Howard.
Yeah, so, so does the, do the regional plans and the state plan and the local plan sort of work together so that the town plans add up to what's in the county plan? Or it seems as though you were able to draw heavily on the Addison County plan. Is that right?
Yes. So that, it did work that way. And the individual towns in Addison County couldn't go forward. I gotta let Andrew in again. Couldn't go forward with doing their plans into the region, to the region had its plan. And so if you read the regional energy plan, you'll see the same targets that then individual towns take to, you know, base their plan on. Oh. Oh, they lost, okay. Andrew is asking me to let him in by phone. I'm not 100% how to do that. Do you know how to do that, Chris? Okay. I'm going to, anyone else have a question? And someone else can answer while I try to do this? Or does anyone else have anything they wanna say about the plan?
Well, I'll ask another one.
Okay.
The. So we've got the, you know, the alternative energy sources, solar and so forth. And so the array that is being planned for our town dump site figures into that, I guess. And so we get a lot of points for taking some initiative, whereas maybe other towns are not, right?
Well, um, the, the array at the town dump won't figure in because we don't have the plans unapproved yet. But well, it will, it will figure in. Yeah, then the numbers will be there, yes. That, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Let me rewind a little bit. It doesn't, we don't have, we won't have any say in the matter. But, but it seems like it's okay. And it's okay, because people seem to favor it, I, you know. But. Let's see. I'm sorry, I'm trying to let Andrew in. Yes, so that, there he is.
Hey.
So anyways, that is, yes, you are absolutely right. That, that would definitely work towards our favor. Yes. And so some, just different combinations of things. Some towns said, like, for Jen's, put a, you know, solar panels on every roof in the city. And that's how we're gonna meet these certain targets. And some, some towns like Panton, they have a huge array existing already, too, Chris says. And so they feel like they've already met their target, certain targets. And, and they, they have, just by the numbers. And also, as, and this process has taken a while, too. So now, as we're, we're finishing a lot of these plans, the numbers are kind of changing, too. So it's, but it's, you gotta then kind of pull back and say, but it's, it's a planning thing and you guys know that. So it's not, you know, the numbers tweak here and there. But communities are actually making a plan towards how they might do it. And the plan can be changed along the way, you know. But keeping the same targets in mind. Okay, we have Andrew back. But are you limited, Andrew?
Okay. No more than usual. My, my internet disappeared suddenly. And I'm gonna blame it on the dancers above us that are jumping building. So I apologize for disappearing.
One thing I was thinking, maybe, you know, I just briefly mentioned the forest blocks. That's a new piece of the plan. Maybe, could you, could you describe that a little bit for people?
Sure.
I mean, we actually put some posters around town and had, had one of those maps up.
Yeah, did we, did you get through energy while I was gone?
So far.
Okay.
Unless, there's another question.
Oh, I have, you have to let me.
Oh, you have to be a co-host again, all right. All right.
But, yeah, so the, the forest box are a new, a new component and requirement for town plans. The requirement is basically just to identify forest box. And then the town is able to sort of take it from there. And the major forest blocks in Bristol already overlap basically with the conservation planning area. So it's, there's not a whole lot of changes in terms of what can or can't be done there. But it's basically an acknowledgement of these are some of the largest unfragmented areas. And it's the ones you would expect. So Hogback Mountain sort of coming in from the north and then the Bristol Cliffs. I can actually pull this up. Since a map is worth more words. So if you can possibly, are you guys able to see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay. So basically, the, the places that are labeled in larger text and then with numbers and letters for sort of the important areas and then habitat connectors. And then we have a description of each of those in the plan. We kind of went through and described each one, which I think folks have all, we looked at pretty early on in our conversations. And then this was all incorporated into the natural resources section, which had some, say, minor revisions to the goals, policies, and actions with the help of the Conservation Commission. And I think we, we kind of streamlined it a bit. So that's, that's sort of the brief overview. And if folks want more details, then I'm happy to offer what I can. And I can, I can go back to that map if it's helpful or folks have other things they wanna see, let me know.
Yeah, those are great.
So Andrew, do you happen to have Sally's email? I think you do.
It's Sally B. in VT.
Well, I can't, I'm not able to send her the agenda, which has the information on it. Could you?
Yeah, I just, I just did, because.
Okay, thank you.
I had already pulled it up.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess if there's no questions.
I have one question.
Sorry, go ahead, Howard.
The, I mean, we are so well situated with the, the great mountain ranges that we've got. And I'm wondering, for example, between the Hogback Mountain block and the Bristol Cliffs block, you know, we've got 116 that, that goes through there. Does, do we know if the bridges over the river and the creeks function as, you know, sort of land bridges under the, under the roads for wildlife, so they get through?
I think the one, the folks most likely to know that would be folks on Conservation Commission. We were able to pull in some data from a, I think it's actually more to the north, Lewis Creek area. But there were some wildlife surveys done in the early 2000s. Is, if you can see the screen we've got here, they did road crossings, which are marked in black and actually broken down by types of species that were crossing there. So the Conservation Commission should have that data as well. And I think something on their radar is to do more wildlife move studies. And I, I think you're exactly right, that there, there are a lot of animals moving between Hogback and Bristol Cliffs. You know, whether the road and the, the river are a pretty large barrier. So how many of them get stopped or turn around is probably an open question. And I don't know whose job it is to clean up the roadkill or the vultures do it. But, and there, there has been some clearing along that road, along 116. I think the last time I was there, it had been kind of cleared out. Because unfortunately, it's also a pinch point for, you know, trees falling on power lines and traffic and everything else. So, you know, once there, Katie, Katie, I think in your office has a turn of the century postcard that shows a giant railway sort of crossing between the peaks, which as far as I know, never happened. Interesting wildlife corridor to connect those.
Yeah, we'll get that set one of these days. It's a very large postcard.
So, so I know, I don't know what the Conservation Commission is currently working on. I know they've had some turnover. But when I talked to them prior to starting the town plan, I know they were pursuing some different wildlife projects. And, you know, they're very involved in a lot of the parks and things. And if, if you can get your hands on wildlife cameras and citizen scientists, I've actually been enjoying front porch forum posts of where people see bears and things. Because you can sort of see where the hotspots are, which in your case, I think a lot of them are coming down from Hogback into town. Or at least that's where people notice them in their compost bins.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we, we worked with the Conservation Commission on, you know, they reviewed this, this piece of the plan with us.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, we were, we were, I think we ended up with three maps in this section of basically sort of overall natural resources with rare species and things. And then the forest box and then the wildlife corridors, which is to some extent above and beyond what the, the state is requiring in terms of identification. But it is, it's a little bit dated, but, you know, I would, I would guess that most of the patterns still hold just in terms of the landscape where animals are trying to move to. But it's mostly, you know, large charismatic mammals. We don't know a whole lot about salamanders or, you know, other, other fauna that might be trying to travel. And obviously, we're, a pretty major issue. But as far as I know, there's not tunnels like the Moncton Underpasses or any plans for that.
We have more of the big guys just crossing the road.
You probably have turtles and.
Well, yeah.
Especially around the pond. But those roads may.
In that area.
Not be enough traffic to be a huge problem. But yeah, the, you do have a fair amount of bear and deer.
We actually had turkeys on Elm Street the other day.
I had turkeys in my backyard. They were walking down the sidewalk on North Street.
Right.
And it's not even turkey season yet. Just imagine October 24th, not that anybody's counting.
I mean, yeah, I'm counting.
They, they do know where to go. Yeah, so, so I think, I think that's something that, especially for the next version of the plan. But I know Middlebury's Conservation Commission is kind of, we don't actually have this detailed data. And is trying to figure out how they're going to come up with something that would be equivalent. Because I showed them this map and they were jealous. So we're trying to wrap our heads around how they can either hire a consultant or get students to work on wildlife tracking for some of those corridor projects.
Any, anything else?
May I, may I jump in with a possibly a dumb question? Because this is my first time at a planning commission meeting and I don't really have my head wrapped around the functions of a town plan. But I'm thinking a lot about, hi. Thinking a lot about these big forest blocks. And I see in the goals, you have written to reduce fragmentation and things like that. Are there also functions in the town plan that would prohibit it? Or is this just sort of more of a guideline? And I'm thinking, you know, if Johnson's wanted to sell their ownership, what would the process look like in that case? And then part B of that question is, has anyone talked to my land trust or other bodies who might be interested in conserving that property?
Well, I'll just answer that, that, those maps that you were looking at are in the natural resource section.
Right.
Our, our land use section talks more specifically about the uses.
Okay, so I'm looking at the wrong part.
Well, you know, that's, that's kind of the inventory piece of the plan. And then you get to, you know, you know, sort of the, the future. So in terms, so to look at the goals, I would look at the goals in the land use. And that sort of sets forth.
You want me to zoom?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just.
Well, I know this is a pretty elementary question. Thank you for taking the time.
No, that's.
No, it's, it's an excellent question. I can see Bill's ready to answer. But we, I mean, we are, so there are still zoning regulations and state regulations and all of the other things still are in place. And I think we, we had some long conversations about language and balancing private property owner rights. And, you know, what, what the community would like to see. And I would point out that Bristol also has. What the community would like to see. And I would point out that Bristol also has a big area of national forest and wilderness in the southern part that. Is not anywhere anytime soon and had some large battles fought over it. But as far as I know, all the zoning is still in place for, is it ten acre lots?
Well, most of the big forest land, the big that we, on those maps. Is zone, is zone conservation. So and it's, and so, so we don't want, I don't want to get the zoning mixed up with the land use, but you can kind of see on this map, this map here.
And I'll, I'll zoom down. But basically the green areas, which are a little harder to see on this map, just because of the parcels. Are the conservation planning area, which has its own set of. Goals and guidelines. And then in the zoning regs or the UDR unified development regs. And we, we'd spend a fair amount of time, I would say, talking over whether changes were needed. And I think we did make some tweaks, but. Yeah, maybe I can, I can let Bill speak to it more as a, as a representative of. For the community.
Happy to do so from that point of view. And also Sarah, I'm. With the A Johnson Company.
Oh, well, there we go.
And it's important to remember. That Bristol was way ahead of most other towns. In. Conserving. The mountainous forested areas. In fact, had set up 25 acre zoning. More than 20 years ago, almost 30 years ago. And. What this does is say, it is highly restricted because it says there can only be. One. Subdivision at most, one subdivision per 25 acres. And you'll find in many, many towns. The maximum. Is one housing unit per 10 acres. So it's two and a half times that. And. As you probably know. This working forest habitat is very. Beneficial to a myriad of wildlife. Most particularly the, the snow chew hare and the whitetail deer. And. Many of the songbirds. Because it's highly compatible with sound management of the forest. And what we've tried to do is to strike a balance between. Keeping the forest working, protecting the wildlife habitat and other environmental goals. Limiting. Limiting development rights, but not extinguishing them completely. And. Also protecting some property rights. Then I would add a new, a new feature that hasn't really. Entered. The forestry section of most town plans, most regional plans yet, although I think it will in the years ahead. Is the amount of. Carbon absorption and carbon storage. That happens in our forests, so serving yet another environmental goal. But the. In brief and some, I would say, Sarah. That the goal is to find a, a good balance of economic and environmental goals and objectives.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Thanks, Sarah. Thanks, Bill.
You bet. Yeah.
Anybody else? Anybody else? It's quiet. It's quiet out there. Did Sally ever find us? I don't think so.
It looked like it.
Yeah, I just, in fact, got an email from her saying that she was trying to get in still.
I don't. Well, maybe I'll. Maybe.
She said, she said she had questions.
I, I don't know. Why she can't get in. Let me see if I see her.
Yeah.
She's not, I, I don't understand why she can't get in. You sent her an email, Andrew.
Yep.
I sent her one also.
Yeah. And. I don't know how to get her in, other than her figuring it out herself. There must.
She's calling the phone.
Is she now?
She could, she can, right?
Yeah, she could, she could actually call me, I guess. Is that, is that legal, Chris? If I put her on, if she calls me?
You're legal.
I don't know. I don't know about that. Okay, I'll give that a try and then. I'll tell her to call me.
I have, I have zoomed with her before on for energy.
I know she knows how to do it.
Well, since we, since we've already touched on. Energy and forest box, should we, should we just run through some of the other things or do folks have other topics they want to touch base on? I will just point out that I, there, there have been a couple tweaks to the. Language and added photos in the cover page for that version that I sent out to the page numbers are slightly off. But there have not been any substantive changes since the, the draft that was posted. And I just noticed that I left the word rural in, in the land use section that I'm going to have to take out, Chris, too.
Didn't we talk about that?
You know, I did a search, but rural shows up a lot in the document. So I couldn't do a find and replace.
Well. Yeah, I don't know how to. I don't think I'm going to be able to do anything different for Sally than everyone else has done.
I mean, the only thing you might do is send the invite right out of Zoom itself instead of forwarding her the.
Oh, yeah. Can I do that? Let me see.
Yeah. And then in the bottom is invite and then you can send it to her. So get that whole spiel.
Do I need to copy it first? No. Oh, I see what you mean. All right. Yeah. I, you know, I just don't know if I'm capable of doing that right now. I have to admit. Unless someone else can do it.
I think only you can do it as the host.
Okay.
Well, you can, you can give hosting rights to somebody else, like give it to Andrew.
Andrew's got hosting rights.
Yeah.
Do you have all the login info? Yeah.
Yeah, but I've already sent it to her.
Right.
Signals.
What?
I smoke signals.
Yeah.
Really?
I was like.
There's enough smoke. There's enough smoke in the world.
Okay. I don't know. It's been posted and posted lots of places. I don't understand, you know. I'm sure we will be able to get to her question if we can't do it in this form. So. If no one has any objections, I think that. We could close the public hearing. If anyone would like to make a motion to do so. Tom makes a motion to close the public hearing on the updated draft of the town plan. Someone liked a second. Rob, second set. Okay, all in favor? Okay. So we are closing the public hearing of the updated. Drafted, updated Bristol Town Plan and Enhanced Energy Plan. And thank you, everyone, for joining us. Planning Commission is going to stick around, members, anyone else can too, if they want to. And discuss our next moves.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, guys, for coming and asking questions.
I can see Lynn and Lloyd.
Yes. What about Lloyd?
I can see him now.
I can't. Oh, Lloyd.
Yeah.
Nice to see you.
Different computer.
But you want to turn the other one off? Lot of problems tonight. A lot of technical difficulties. Now, I'm assuming we had a quorum there.
Okay.
And we really should have, well, we didn't do a roll call vote, but, well, that was just to close the hearing. So that's fine. Okay, so what we need to do next is to discuss. Our next move as commission. If we're going to move forward to approve the plan. To then move it forward to the select board for a public hearing. And with that, we would. Approve the memo that I sent out to everybody today as part of that. And that hearing would be on November 9. So is there a motion someone would like to make regarding next steps?
What would the wording of that motion be, just as it is?
That, that.
That we, that we approve the plan and submit it to the select board.
Updated. Town plan and enhanced with an enhanced energy plan. And I think we could say as. Along with the memo that serves as the basically. Report, that's a required report that goes with the plan to move it forward to a select board hearing. I don't know if we need to say November 9th because it's on the letter. But and the date of the letter is. It's October 6th. And did everyone hear this?
Is the draft plan dated? Is there a date on the actual draft plan? Does you really want to reference that? So that it's a.
There is.
So the one, the one that was approved last time was the 9-1. With the minor updates. We.
Changes and, and this is, you know, now is the time, well, let, let's, let's make the motion first and then we can discuss. So how are we with that motion? Are you getting this, Bill?
I am.
Make a motion to approve. Draft proposed Bristol Town Plan and Energy Plan dated, what's the date?
9-1-20.
Okay. To move forward towards a select board hearing. On November 9. 2020. And I don't, I don't know how to get the wording in for the, I'm not supposed to be making a motion though. Had to get the wording in for the memo with the accompanied memo describing the, the. Changes on the plan. Do we have that?
That would start a second sentence that the description of the changes to the town plan. Are summarized in a memo dated blah, blah, blah by.
October 6, 2020.
Yeah. And then whoever wrote the letter is a planning commission, right?
We did.
Yeah, by the planning commission. And insert that right between the first sentence and then when the select board's going to have their hearing would be my recommendation.
Can we read that back? So we're on the same page?
So I make a motion to approve the updated. Bristol Plan dated 9-1-2020. With minor alterations, along with the memo of changes dated 10-6-2020 by the planning commission.
Sound good?
Yep.
We got Sally.
That Bill will get the wording of that motion pretty close to the way it was.
Ta-da.
Thank you.
To you, Bill, but we also have Sally now.
Oh, we do.
Yeah.
Welcome, Sally. Hey, thank you.
I'm really sorry. I don't know why you weren't able to get in.
I don't know.
Okay.
Just, just the rule order, you really, if you're going to open that up, you need to suspend the motion.
Yeah. Wait. Let me just back up. I just wanted to say welcome to Sally. I didn't invite her to the public hearing yet, which we closed, but. We are going to, we just made a motion. We would have to make a motion to suspend that motion, correct?
Did anyone ever second the motion?
No.
Nobody seconded.
Maybe we don't need to do that.
Then, nope, then just ignore it for now.
Hello?
So Sally, you got some questions for us?
Yes, is the hearing happening?
You're it.
He had a couple of comments.
Okay, great. Well. Want to, I was wondering in that the beginning of the, it's talking about the births and the deaths and showing that graph. Anyway, I was wondering why you didn't have the info in there for 2018 and 2019. Since you were doing decades, you know, and. Maybe it's because it wasn't on census information or whatever, but it just seems. You know, the, the, you have three decades on page 10 of the town plan.
Yep, I'm going to pull it up. Yeah, I think, I think it was. And it was, that was the most recent that was available, but that was also pretty early on, so. It may be that that's been updated.
Well, the thing is, it is available in the town reports. I mean, I got them today and it's. You know, 46 births in 2018 and 43 in 2019. It seems like it's easy to get that info.
Okay, yep.
And the, and the death. It just seems like if we're comparing decades, we should have the full decade there.
I know part of that was because of when things were put together and we've been working on this for so long. It is not always really possible to go back and update everything as we move along. So some of that stuff may be kind of an oversight of that nature.
Sally, you can't, you can't tell the change in population by just factoring in births and deaths. There's also in migration and out migration.
Oh, right. Good point. So why is it saying births and deaths there?
On this, on this graph?
Yeah.
So this is, this is basically just to illustrate that we have a separate population.
I agree. I think, I think it just would be good to really see that graph above actually more accurate, which would. Both of those lines would be different because of the deaths and births that happened the next couple of years. It just seems. Only fair to show people the, the true graph if you're going to put a graph there.
I think the idea is to show trends. This is a point in time. You can't keep this up every day.
Right, I, I'm, I'm, I agree with both points. We have had certain. Statistics become available and then, you know, as. and we're not, we were looking, I think we, we pulled these from a more of a census, the census, the census, isn't that right, Andrew, which did not have, have. We should double check that, which is, it's a fine comment to, to make.
It wouldn't be that hard.
Yeah, so we're making a big jump from, you know, and, and I don't, I don't really think it's, you know, questioned really a fair, I mean, we just like, you know, we're not trying to not.
Oh, I know, I know, I just know that right now, where, since I'm on the Community Engagement Committee of the Education thing, it's a, it's a big issue now.
Oh, I know, I, I agree.
So that's why I think it would be really good if we were very clear and it looked really, you know, like people were trying to show what's really going on. And those lines would look slightly different, you know, if, if they're accurate. And the other thing is, you know, when this actually gets whatever, published or whatever you call it, it won't be until 2021. And so to have all that far back data, it just seems like we should be up to date.
No, I, I, I'm, I'm fine with that, I mean, that's not a, a huge change, we can, we can adjust that graph to get, you know, check out the data that you're referring to in the, and I thought I had that.
I have it right here in front of me, I got the.
I know where to get it, I know where to get it.
Yeah, okay.
So, you're right, because it does take a while, it won't be until 2021 if things go smoothly. So.
So I will point out that we did have the, the MNA projections, like the day they came out, so.
You did, and so if you go to the education section.
Again, projections are just projections, I'm talking about real data, because the projections are just guesses about what's going to happen in the future, we don't even really know. So those projections are, are simply, you know, before COVID and before people started moving in, we just don't really know that, so it's not even real data. It's just thoughts about what might happen. So I think at least the real data should be in there for sure.
I mean, I'm okay with that. That is, well, we don't need to decide that this is a public hearing, so we were thrown off our game a little bit, I'm sorry. So we're back in the public hearing? Yes, no?
Did you reopen the public hearing?
I don't really remember doing that. So we did it, we got out of the motion, but I do not believe we just started, that I reopened the public hearing, because my phone was ringing and I thought it was Sally, so. But I, let's say that I think we should do that, and we will just summarize your comment. Does that sound good with everybody?
Yeah, I got her comments down.
Okay, so we're reopening the public hearing.
So I guess to Chris's point, do we need to have a motion to reopen it?
No, the chair can just actually reopen the public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I guess we'll need a motion to close it.
Are we, is Sally finished?
Are you finished?
I know, I have a, I think I have a couple of other things here, just a little bit. Okay, the business, on, let's see, page, well, one, page 41, there's just a minor thing in there. It says the Hanover Center rather than the Patricia A. Hannaford Career Center.
Okay, thank you.
That's page 41. Let's see. There was something in the business establishment, too, oh, do you want me to show you where it is on the page 41?
Yeah, so the, because we added a cover page, the numbers are now off. Do you know, what section was, was the Hannaford in, just so I get the?
Let's see, okay, it's beyond Business Park, so keep going a little bit more to page 41.
Is it in?
In the Goals and Policies?
Uh, no, it was in the second paragraph of, are you, are you on page 41 yet?
The, the page numbers don't sync up, Sally, they, they added a cover, the numbers are not going to be the same.
Okay.
But was this, was this, oh, it was Education, okay.
Okay, here we go, yeah, let's see.
Go, go back up, Andrew, you just went by it.
Right, right, it's a graph, it's the title of the graph.
No.
Or the part. Oh, no, maybe not.
It's on page 43, it's the second paragraph, I saw it the first time you went by it.
Yep, yep, that's it.
Second to last sentence.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Patricia A. Hannaford.
As well as the following sentence.
Yeah. You got that, Andrew?
And we called it Hanover in the second sentence.
It was Hanover in the first one, too. All right, we didn't lose you, did we, Andrew?
What, no, I'm still, can you hear me?
Yeah, 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 okay, we can't lose you again.
Oh, you just mean by thought?
No, I thought you were really gone.
I'm digitally here. Okay.
Are you able, so you, so you, it said, it still says Hannaford, right? I mean, it still says Hanover yet, that's.
Yeah, we'll get it, we'll get it.
Okay, great.
Well, it's in Middlebury, so who cares?
He's kidding.
I'm kidding, sorry, sarcasm.
I was just trying to read my notes, that's why I didn't hear the joke. Okay, something about business. Let's see. I forgot what I was trying to get to, but do we have the up-to-date information on the business in Bristol?
How up to date?
It's just up to 2018, or something like that, on a graph, I guess? I'm sorry, I don't.
Annual employment. For 2018.
Oh, yeah, that's it, is that, so we don't have the last couple of years? Which is, it's all right, I don't know why I was concerned about that, really.
I can check and see if we have 2019, I would imagine 2020 is like.
Because it seems like there was like two, two years ago where it was kind of down, and then a lot of work was done on, Bristol Corps did a lot of work and it seemed like it pulled business up, but I'm not really sure why I was so concerned about that, but I just felt like things should be so up to date, because once we do it, if we're already two years behind, then we're seven years behind when it comes around time to change again.
Well, one can make a change to the plan, really, you can suggest it any year, it just needs to, unfortunately, the way Bristol does it, we have to do it, the whole town needs to vote on it, and we have to have a public hearing and all that. So it's, it's a. But you're right.
That's why I figured we could just try to get it up to date as much as possible, if we can. I don't know, I imagine Ian would be a good one to ask that about, he at least knows what's going on on Main Street.
Well, the graph you're talking about, Sally, cites the Vermont Department of Labor, so I assume they are the authoritative source.
Okay.
That Ian or anybody knows exactly how many people are working in Bristol.
Okay, okay, so it's not really businesses, it's employment, I see. Was there another one that was about businesses?
Well, we talk about where is small businesses in Bristol? Yes.
Number of business establishments.
That's it, right there, that's probably the one I was thinking about, right there.
Yeah, we can see if, if.
That would be the one that I would be interested in seeing.
Where, where did those numbers, I assume those again are Department of Labor numbers, Andrew?
Yeah, that one doesn't have a.
Doesn't have a citation.
Doesn't have a citation on it, I just noticed that, too.
I think it's from the same.
Yeah, all four of those, all four or five of those graphs seem to coincide with the same data set.
Can you just make a note that we should cite that?
Yes, I, I already have.
It might be from the Bureau of Census, and it could either be from their sample or from their cen, the census that they take, I believe it's every five years.
Yeah.
With the in-between years estimated from the sample.
American Community Survey, Bill? Are you muted?
These are, these are all from the Department of Labor.
Oh, okay, okay.
Business and Employment Numbers. It's.
About other Vermont numbers, okay.
Yeah, with the, the Bristol, they keep track of establishments and employment at the town level. But I think it is, it's at least a year behind, and it may have been two, but I'll double check, because they may have had a 2019 by now.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I have to say, this has been, I mean, you guys have done a phenomenal job, this is a lot of work, so I'm really grateful that all I have to do is kind of look through and see if I see something to say something about, so I feel like that's all, the rest is fabulous. I just wanted to pipe up for those few things.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you for all the work you're, you've been doing.
Thanks for reading the plan, Sally.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good plan, man. It's great.
It has, it has a lot of hours behind it.
Yeah, I can imagine.
Rob had, Rob had multiple children that have all grown up and gone to college by now. Since we started this plan.
I even remember some of them.
Yeah.
I don't remember my children. Okay, so.
Great, well, thank you, I'm, I'm glad I finally got to come in.
Yep, great, I don't know why that happened, but here you are. Okay, so.
I think it was on, probably something on my computer. Anyway, have a great night.
Okay.
Thanks a lot. Sure, bye.
Okay, so now I need a motion, another motion to close the second public hearing that we had tonight. Or the amended public hearing. Motion?
Motion closes the public hearing.
Okay, second? Second F, all in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Public hearing is closed.
So just a question before we, before we move into further motions, if there are minor changes. And, because there were, I think, two tweaks since the 9-1, and then the ones that I just mentioned to a couple of graphs and things. How does that affect the approval date of the plan? Just moving forward.
We can, we can, everything was pretty straightforward that we discussed, we can make changes. We can approve the plan still with those changes as conditions.
Okay.
Is it, is that the end? Is it just those couple that were noted, or are we going to go back through all the data and all the graphs to make sure they're as up to date as possible? Like, that's, that's my question and my issue with this, where's, where's the cutoff of?
Don't be a troublemaker, Rob.
Right, Rob.
I, I would, I would just, my opinion is we just do what the oil the squeaky wheel.
Right. I, I would agree with Kevin, but.
Okay.
And Tom, that means you agree too. Or you want to say something, Tom?
I do. Since, as I said, we're a point in time, we can't keep everything updated weekly, and that shows trends that are relevant to everything, so I don't think it really frankly needs to be changed for this small item.
Right, I know there is a lot of concern about the schools and, you know, if all of a sudden we have a lot more babies born, that we're going to hold on to our elementary school.
Well, the sad, the sad thing is, if per two additional data points compared to where the graph sits is not going to markedly change anything anyway, but.
I agree.
But you can put another year or two or whatever on the graph, so takes away that question.
Yeah, so my, my count was that the Town Births and Deaths graph, and then the Employment and Business Class, or graph, if that data is available, and then cite it. So that's.
So we can put that into a motion, you know, if available.
Those would be the conditions?
Yes.
If available, yeah, okay.
Brown, can you restate that motion again?
I have no idea.
Well, we're going to go back to the initial motion that Jeff made.
The initial motion was, I make a motion to approve the updated drafted Bristol Town Plan dated 9/1/2020, along with the memo of changes, and forward that to the Select Board Hearing, which is to take place on November 9th. The condition, one condition is, is that we make any changes as far as they are feasible in the plan, according to the public hearing of 9/6/2020.
Can we back up, I thought we had a date on that memo.
We do, 10/6/2020. Okay.
So when you say, also, you said any changes as long as they're feasible, why don't we say the, that, that seems too broad. How about?
Changes to the graphs.
Specifically noted changes.
Yeah, specifically, changes noted in the public hearing.
Anybody got that?
Or if available.
Yes, okay.
You got that?
Not really, I mean, I can make it up when I do the notes tomorrow.
I, I think we need to do it now.
Well, the key one is Andrew's noted, say that one again, Andrew, where noted something or other?
Change, specific changes as noted in the public hearing will be updated as feasible.
Did we reference the graph specifically?
I don't think we have to.
Well, why don't you just put in your minutes that that two, one condition was to up, update the population graph if available, and then another note to update the business numbers.
And import.
If available.
It was those two, right?
Right.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So as long as, does that make sense, as long as then the the motion references the minutes?
Okay.
Okay.
We've got to be specific, because Rob wants to go back through the whole thing.
Okay, I mean, is everybody good? Are we good? We don't want to make a mistake here. What do you think, Bill, Sarah? Good, thumbs up?
So, that's, that's good, and I think these changes are what the gurus like Andrew call, and yet now you, Katie, since you're a guru too, they call them immaterial.
Okay, when did I get to be a guru?
I think non, non-substantive is the, is the correct.
Subs.
Non, non-substantive.
Right, that's the only thing we're accepting tonight anyways, or not.
Another, another guru, Jeffrey.
All right, so that is the motion made, and is there a second? All right. So that is the motion made. And is there a second?
Who made the motion?
Jeff did with a little help from Bill.
Oh, okay. But I can't second my own motion.
No?
It, it should be reiterated one final time. I mean, I know I'm beating a dead horse here, but you're making a huge motion here that if somebody ever challenged this, you want to make sure this is.
Right. Well, that's why I said, is everybody okay with this? What do you think? All right. So let's, Bill, can you handle reading it again?
Well, I'm making it up. I mean.
What are you going to?
A motion to approve the updated draft for the Bristol Town Plan dated 9/1/2020. Submitting that to the Select Board for her hearing along with the memo of changes dated 10/6/2020. Conditional on specific changes as noted in the public hearing. Number one, the population graph. Number two, the business numbers.
Small business numbers. And can we say small business numbers?
We can do that.
Okay.
Small business numbers.
Oh, and I would add comma. Both of which are considered non-substantive.
Oh, Jesus, Bill, give me a break, will you? I'm going to get the air in here pretty soon.
This is big, this is big, Bill. This is important.
So, so I have, I have a suggestion which would make it shorter.
Yeah, I just texted, I just chatted out a, a very brief version, I think, which will cover everything you need. If somebody wants, if you want to just look at the chat section.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah.
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, I didn't have the two dates in my head. That's why they're all access. So you just got to pencil in those two dates. And just review, just have people take a look at that. See, I think that covers everything you need to do.
Sure.
That's done. Let me leave that up there. I got to copy it.
I can email that to you, Bill.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
I just need somebody to make that actual motion.
Okay.
The memo, the memo should, the company memo by the Planning Commission dated XXXX. Think we need to see who the memo's from.
Uh, why don't we say the accompanying, uh, planning commission.
Memo.
Memo.
Yep. I'm adding that right now.
Now dated.
10/6/2020.
Along with, right? We like the last part.
So I just added the, the planning commission aspect to that. I'll send that to you, Bill.
So I'm reading this, Chris, and it says, along with the non-substantive changes expressed at the public hearing, then it has O5.
Whoops.
No, that's just.
Should be on.
Okay.
I'm typing too fast.
Okay. So.
I got most of it.
Okay, but someone needs to read it.
All right, I will make a motion. I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve the Town Plan dated 9/1/2020 and the accompanying Planning Commission memo dated 10/6/2020 along with non-substantive changes expressed at the public hearing on 10/6/2020. And then the plan shall be moved to the Select Board.
And should we say for a public hearing or just Select Board? Okay, great. Thanks, Rob. Would someone like to second that?
I'll second it.
Jeff seconded it. We have a discussion on that. Other than, thank God. Seeing none. All in favor of the motion? Uh, it's unanimous. All over that, I don't need to ask who is opposed to it. Wait, did you raise your hand the first time, Bill?
Yeah.
Okay, it's other Bill, other Bill. All right, all right. The motion has been passed, approved. And we have approved our plan. Thank you very much. Do you look like you want to say something, Chris? No?
I was going to say, Bill, I just emailed you that motion, the verbiage from that motion.
Okay. So thank you, everybody, for sticking it out and working hard on this. And onward, we will.
So do we get the winner off?
I'm hoping. So someone needs to make a motion to close the meeting.
I make a motion to close the meeting at 8:21 PM.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay.
For all of your good leadership, Katie.
Oh, well, thank you.
When is our next meeting?
Well, um, I don't know. What is today is the question.
Today's the sixth, the third, the third.
It's the 20th.
No, we could probably take a meeting off. We're going to have, I'm just going to.
All right, so then you want, you want to go.
I will let you know. Okay, I will reassess.
So if we take a meeting off, the next meeting would be the 17th of November.
Right.
Right?
Okay. No?
You'll let us know.
Why, why wouldn't we go back to the first meeting of the month and not the first and third?
Because the regular meetings are the third and we've been meeting.
Okay.
Twice because of all the work.
So we would go back to meeting on the third and not the first and third?
Right. So essentially, we've had a meeting for October tonight. But let me just, you know, take a look if there's anything else we need to do. We will need to get this document to, to, it's got to get before the ninth. It needs to get dated and sent to the Select Board, but I think we pretty much have it. We had some other photos that were going to go in there, but they're not in there yet. So it might shift it around a little bit. So I guess we'll, we'll try to pull that together. Andrew will try to pull that together before Thursday or by Thursday.
We're done at 8:30. I told my wife I wasn't going to be home until 9:30, so I can work on it tonight. Unless something, unless somebody leaves a crackpot on the stove again. Yeah, I can, I mean, I can, except for the photos, unless there were other photos that wanted to be incorporated, but I, I can.
Yeah, well, we can talk tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. So then, I think we're good. Motion adjourned. Did we do that yet?
Yeah, we did.
Okay. So I, I don't know if we did. Second, all right, meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Night.